Good evening, everyone. It's 6 o'clock. It is the February 27th regular meeting of the Monticello District 82 School Board to welcome all of our guests that are in person here and anyone that's watching on the livestream. Would anyone please be invited to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I've sent a request to talk about the school start times. Were we going to discuss that or?
It's on there.
I believe it's on the agenda.
Did they change it?
Yep, it's...
It was on there in front.
Yep, it's as number...
School start time objective or goal.
Yep.
Oh, okay, I guess, sorry.
Seconded.
So, all those in favor of approving the agenda as it stands, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed, please say no. Motion to approve the agenda stands, five and zero, thank you. We have next citizens' comments. I don't believe we have any citizens' comments this evening, so we'll be moving on to item number five on our agenda and welcoming our two student representatives, Richardson and Brady Bergstrom.
All right, I'm Brady, in case you guys forgot. I haven't been here for a few months, but glad to be back. And today I'm going to be talking a little bit about winter sports updates because their seasons are coming to a close and just a few other things that are happening at the high school. So, all winter sports are coming to a close very quickly. Boys and girls hockey, seasons both ended. The boys lost to St. Cloud Cathedral Saturday night in the semifinals. Boys basketball team has their last regular season game against Big Lake tomorrow. And sections to follow that. And the girls got the two seed, so they play Big Lake tomorrow also in the first round of sections. The boys wrestling team also will finish their season. Boys swimming will be ending their season off on a high note because they went to state, and that'll be this weekend. The following members will be participating at state: Grant Stahlback, Paul Fosin, Gabe McDermott, Noah Miller, Jason Jones, Ethan Bad, Carson Kostrom, plus any alternates. A few other people that made it to state were Reagan Bryant for gymnastics and Thor Lemke as part of the math team. A few other things that are going on at the high school. We recently had a sixth through 12th grade band concert just last week, and today we actually have a choir concert starting at 7 o'clock tonight. One other thing that I wanted to touch on was that the principals are hosting like senior meetings. They do them about once a month, and we have one coming up next week just to talk about graduation requirements and scholarships and other things like that.
All right, and so here we go, already thinking about spring sports now, which is super exciting for both me and Brady because I run track and field and Brady plays golf. We're having a meeting next Monday, March 6th, to kind of go over what the spring sports season is going to look like and kind of, we're on that downhill stretch for the end of the school year, which is very exciting, and I'm super excited to meet all of the girls for the track and field season, so that's super exciting. And then kind of to backtrack from the last meeting and talk about snow week, I mentioned to you guys kind of the things that were going on. We had a document which was found in the history pod. It was under like a stack of newspapers. So that was really fun because Thor Lemke put that together. We had a little hint every day put out on the intercom. And then Tuesday and Thursday, we had bingo, which was a great turnout. It was a lot of fun to see all of the teachers kind of get involved and want like their kids within their passion to win. Like Hanson would be screaming in the hallways, and it was a lot of fun. So that was a lot of fun for us to partake in. And then we also had a huge turnout for Cakes for a Cause, which all the donations went to MJ Arns, who is currently battling bone cancer. I've sold over 2,000 cakes, so that's very exciting for us. Student council brought them out to all of the surrounding Monticello schools, and then we brought them out to the student body as well. And then another exciting week that we get to look forward to next week, starting, is Survivor Week, which we implemented this the first time last year. And basically, it's a bunch of applicants that are filling out applications this week. They get to be involved and do a bunch of like activities throughout the week, whether that be like minute games or like eating crickets was last year, which is kind of weird. That's going to be starting next week, and then their goal is to kind of be the survivor, like win the whole thing. And then I believe we have a teacher that does that as well. So that's some exciting things that we're looking forward to during season and then kind of, you know, getting ready for spring break. We're just going to have a fun week for that. So any questions you guys have from me or Brady?
Is prom underway, being planned?
Prom is underway, and that is partaking with the prom committee. I believe this year it's April 29th, and we're all getting excited for that as well, so yeah.
I want to thank Sam and Brady for giving their good report, and for the benefit of the folks that are here in the room, Sam and Brady are both eligible to apply for a $3,000 scholarship for college through the Minnesota School Boards Association if they choose to compete for that. It's a competitive process, but we hope you'll try, and we're here for you to write those letters of recommendation if you need them. Just let us know, so.
Thank you.
And Sam and Brady have the option to stay for the remainder of the meeting, or we could let them, they have other activities they need to report to. So, thank you. So, moving on to our consent agenda, we have three areas on the consent agenda. Members received all of these packets ahead of time on Friday. We have our approval of the minutes from February 6th. We also have recurring personnel matters, and then our bills, monthly bills. I'd like to see a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
A motion to approve the consent agenda by Jeff Heckley, seconded by Jamie Seaman. Any discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those who approve say aye.
Aye.
Those please say no. Ayes are five and zero. Motion passes. Moving on to item number seven, our collaborative connections. We have a very fortunate group of folks to be with us here tonight, the Pinewood Elementary Veterans Tribute, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Olson and Gary Craft to do that presentation for us.
I'm going to call up the expert who has led it from the whole process through, so, Mr. Craft, thank you for being here and bringing our distinguished face forward here tonight. We're excited to have you talk about that process, and I know some pictures and things that we'll get to showcase as well, so.
I appreciate the opportunity for being here tonight to give respect and appreciation to our veterans first and foremost. We have a few of them, and there are probably many other in this room. Thank you for your service. It started off, the Pinewood Tribute was last summer, and I was walking into the Pinewood office, and a gentleman had walked in, and it was Jim Wallen from the American Legion, bringing supplies for the start of school in the fall that was just donated. It's just one of the many things that our veterans and Monticello Legion Post 260 does for the Monticello schools. Being not even a block away from the Legion Club, I'm hoping that Pinewood gets special treatment. But no, we appreciate them being just that short walk away, and we see them many times. And for all that you do from all of us, thank you. So after that day, I saw Jim walk in the office, I thought to myself, we need to do something. I'm a Pinewood alumni. I've been with the district for 38 years. I went to kindergarten at Pinewood, so Pinewood is home, and I figured Pinewood needs to do something, anything. And I started thinking about, how could we do this? And then I started realizing what they do for our school safety patrol. It is endless that what they do. If they need flags for our safety patrol, if they need vests, they pay for the safety patrol to go on field trips, the donations for school supplies, t-shirts. It's just endless what they do, and they never ask for anything. And I thought, how special is that, that that group can bless the Monticello schools with that? So, my brain started clicking, and I thought, it'd be nice to have a tribute mural in the collaboration between Pinewood Elementary Safety Patrol and Monticello Legion Post 260. So, I got to work. I contacted my niece, who lives in California, who lives in Van Nuys and works in Hollywood. I am very, very proud of her. She is an amazing artist, as you will see or are seeing. And I asked her to draft something up. She was here for the holidays, and she stopped by the Legion Club and took pictures of the statues that are out front, the eagle that is out front. And within a week, she had this drafted up, just right off the top of her head. And her comment was, well, do you think they'll like it? I'm absolutely positive they will love it. So, we started working on that, and I wanted to see what we can do for raising funds to get this project done. And I talked to Jim at the Legion, I talked to my niece, and then I started going out and people that we see at Pinewood each and every day, if they'd be interested in donating. And I was surprised how the outpouring from people wanted to do and be involved, whatever they can to make this happen at Pinewood. So, once we got that rolling, Aleah came in, drove through the first snowstorm over the holidays. She drove 24 hours from California in a snowstorm, and she spent five days straight at Pinewood, drafting it on the wall, painting it with her brother Nick and their very good friend Joshua. They spent day and night at Pinewood, and now you see the results. From the patriotism to our school patrol honoring that, honoring the American Legion, and I thanked her so much because I've had more people say this about the mural, is if you look at the mural, and this was all Aleah, the diverse combination of students walking across reaches everyone. She didn't leave anyone out. And I told her, I said, that means the most about diversity, that we are representing all students at Pinewood. Once it was done, we started coming up with other ideas. Boy, it'd be nice to have an LED light. Boy, it'd be nice to have a LED light shining on this. Hmm. Boy, it'd be nice to have it on 24/7 so people driving by at night see this entryway all lit up in tribute to our veterans and our school patrol. I contacted Scott Johnson from Excel Energy. And again, it didn't take but 10 seconds. We're in. What can Excel Energy do? I worked with our electrician, Dan D'Amiani from Double D Electric, who has been with the school for over 40 years. And we worked on getting a plan to put LED lighting up. Once we had that figured out and the lighting was taken care of, I had some teachers at Pinewood going, yes, but it's a mural. It's, I mean, the lighting is great, but there's no place to sit. So then we thought, let's do a tribute bench. So, the tribute bench, it says honoring all who served with the American flag in the middle and Pinewood Elementary School Patrol on the other side. And then across the top over the flag, it says, thank you, Monticello Legion Post 260. I started talking to people and it was, again, amazing how people stepped up. I knew somebody that was in the Monticello Rotary Club, so I gave her a call. And again, what can we do? This shows in this town how much we honor and respect all the men and women who have served and all that they do continually each and every day. So, the Rotary made a donation. Well, then another person was like, well, you know, this glass over the top of the doors, that would be nice if we could do something with that. I called Chris Sparda from Franklin Graphics, who does stuff for the Monticello School District. He letters the vehicles and he does stuff for our sports department. I called him and I said, Chris, could you help us out with this? Absolutely. Let me come take a look. So he did vinyl graphics over all the glass and it looks amazing on both sides. And Franklin Graphic donated it. So, between that, we had to get some assistance and these ladies have been wonderful for Pinewood. They have been fantastic. That's the Pinewood PTO Committee. Soon as I asked about the artist, the mural, and all the things coming down the road, we sat down, we talked, and they were there for Pinewood. They said, we would love, it's an investment that we're putting in the school for many generations to enjoy. So, once we had the lights, we had the graphics, we had the bench, we had the mural, now Jim Wallen is stepping up again and getting us a brand-new American flag with a beautiful flag holder and a POW flag with a flag holder for both sides of the bench. Thank you. So, it just keeps growing and growing. Once we started this, everybody just wanted to join in and show their appreciation. So, if I could, I would like people to stand. I know a couple of them aren't here, but we'll start off with the Pinewood PTO, Kelsey Hines. She's on the committee at Pinewood. Jamie Klein. We will go to the Rotary Club, Tina Burkholder. Monticello American Legion Post 260. My friend, Jim Wallen. Terry Sickler. And Jerry Dorr. Thank you, guys. This wouldn't have been possible.[896.82][896.82](applause) There are two members that could not make it tonight. One had his daughter break her ankle. So he could not make it tonight. I says, I think you have a good reason. That is Chris Sparda. He is a resident of Monticello, but he works for Franklin Graphics in Clearwater. So, thank you to Chris. And Excel Energy, this is Scott Johnson. I was amazed at how they wanted to put out there, what do you need? And if it's for Pinewood, if it's for the veterans, what do you need? So, a big thanks to all of you that helped make this possible. And it's an honor to be at Pinewood. So, I appreciate all this from everyone and all I gotta say is, we're not done yet.
If we could get everybody up, we can put the picture in the background, Gavin, again, and on the screen and then stand in front of the table to have everybody's picture. It's all part of the project. We'll get a picture. Yeah, yeah.
Give them one more round of applause.
And Gary, I, um...
Thank you.
You're sitting getting recognition to everybody else, but you're the guy who put this all together. You pulled the strings, you have the connections with the community to make something amazing like this happen. So I just want you to know, we're very grateful and thank you.
My pleasure.[1041.13][1041.13](applause) I would like to also add, if anybody has any questions from like Jim Wallen or any of our veterans about all that they do, feel free to ask. I mean, I know Jim talks, but I think we could keep him under control, so.[1061.74][1061.74](laughter) Okay. So if you would like to ask just a little bit about the program for the safety patrol, that'd be great. Thank you for your time.
And so often, we put together things called strategic plans. We had come up with all these dry vision statements and, you know, things that we think are leading us. And then we come upon something like collaborative connections. And on the one hand, that sounds like, you know, the telephone company or something. But on the other hand, you see a project like this and you really know that this is a tight-knit, small community and that people are really willing to go out and contribute to projects like this in a way that you just don't get in large communities, I think. And I think that's one of the real strengths that we have of Monticello. So, it's just a beautiful project and I thank you guys so much. Jamie and I are both veterans as well, so, you know, as veterans, it's near and dear to our heart as well, so thank you.
I'd just like to absolutely thank you guys, everybody in the project, and part of the project. But our partnership with the American Legion as a school district goes with all it being said, is one of the greatest partnerships, you know, that we absolutely ask for. It's an honor to be able to give a little back to the people who serve in the greatest sacrifice of all when you do serve. So we're so proud to have that partnership with you. And so thank you for, thank you for your, your energy, your commitment to kids and the people of our community. And what else? I just, yeah.
And for the crossing guard program, I think ours is a model for every district in the state. So, does anybody have any questions for...
...that sends all the clay more toward his to be your bill. I know a lot of you hear clay, I think. Anyway, they walk there, we pay for it, it's real force the last couple of years of the Ellison Foundation has helped. We do a lot, I'm the chairman. He is our commander and Jerry Dorr is our chairman.
How many crossing guards do we have? 24.
Also, the auxiliary made from the T-shirts, we made from the T-shirts from the bus safety riders. There was a few orange T-shirts. And that's not, we do boys, we do girls, we do Legion baseball. And so I have to get all the girls, the pre-girls. There are just a few things that we have to do.
So neat seeing the people here today, that we got to experience that and feel that collaborative work from the ground and see everybody coming together as a celebration is something that I don't think any of us will ever forget here tonight.
And thank you for coming. Anybody else have any further discussion, questions?
That's great. That's great.
On to our acceptance of gifts. I'm gonna have Mr. Olson discuss the donations that we have this time. We're gonna have a one very small change to our voting process on the resolution. We're gonna do a roll call vote. That's a new recommendation by MSBA that we do roll call votes on resolutions. So we'll do that as a roll call vote.
Right, so I'll pick up and start with the first one, because the first one hasn't been announced yet, but then some of these will be repeat from Mr. Craft's presentation. But first one for Pinewood Elementary to allow a unit in lacrosse. And so, we have Kerry Litticote and Martin here tonight. And I do have to tell you that they had to work pretty hard, because when you bring something forward like this type of equipment, it is equipment that has to be fit into a curriculum. So we had to work with PE teachers, we had to work with the principal and make sure that we're able to fit the standards and the work that the school did. Connecting with the association is something that we're also very proud of. So, we will, I'm gonna go through all of them and you up here for, thanks for being here. We don't always get our people that come, but you can see how important it is to, going through, I'll just, like I said, repeat some of these. But the LED lightning for veterans tribute mural at Pinewood from Excel Energy for $1,900. We have Monticello Rotary for $1,000 that also contributed to the veterans tribute bench at Pinewood Elementary. Franklin Graphics did the American flag for display at Pinewood Elementary. And just to make sure, my computer shut down, so if you guys can scroll on there, just to make sure I didn't forget. Thank you. Pinewood PTO, also to help cover the costs of the veterans tribute at Pinewood. And then Central Minnesota Manufacturing Association, otherwise known as CMMB, $1,000 funding for a sublimation printer and for the Monticello High School Industrial Tech Department. Obviously, all of these are so generous donations, but if I could, we could have lacrosse come on up here and we'll get a picture and I get to be in here with this one with you guys.
Can you get a coordinate of... Thank you, Tina.
I just wanna say thank you to Kerry and James as well. It takes leaders like you guys in our community to see a need and then do the steps to make it happen. So I'm super grateful for that and it's gonna be impacting a lot of kids in our district, so thank you.
Anyone else? Further discussion? So do I have a motion for the resolution for the acceptance of gifts?
I think I will share the decision.
Yes.
If we resolve by the Monticello School Board, number 882, the grateful set of foundations. Monticello Lacrosse Club, lacrosse equipment for Monticello Elementary, Excel Energy, $1,000 LED lighting for veterans tribute. Rotary, $1,000 for veterans tribute bench at Pinewood. Franklin Graphics for the light graphics. 2,110,000 dollars for additional cost attributed. And CMM, $1,000 for the sublimation printer for the Monticello High School Tech Department.
Have to do a second? Since we're doing, okay, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Seconded by Casey Root. We're gonna have a roll call vote for the resolution. Root?
Aye.
Branson?
Aye.
Seaman?
Aye.
Heckley?
Aye.
DeBarth?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Moving on to our item C, our school start time update. This is a project that has been in process for almost a year now, discussions and groups. And we're just, we're not taking any votes on it this evening, we're just having an update from Superintendent Olson about the process and where we're at.
Yeah, I'll let you know when you can click something. It's important to recognize the, our school time task force really started, it's been on for, it's been something that's been important for different groups of people. And as important is that we should always be looking at ways to help students be able to have the best learning environment and the best medical research towards being successful in schools. And so, as we started down this road again, it stemmed from a group of doctors who definitely still wanted to see this come forward. But it also has been a conversation that's never left our teacher rank. We talk about educators all the time, watch our kids who may seem sleepy in the morning, watch our kids who seem to be energetic in the morning. And we wanna do what's right by all of these. So that's where the discussion, why it resurfaced, because it's really never left us. It's been part of our landscape for decades. So this time, just like last time, we started by gathering some initial data of what did the community think about it? And when I talk about community, I talk about our families. And that was like the first formative assessment. And that assessment showed that if we pass that, if we were to just slam it down and just go forward with it, about 52% of the people would like it. And about 48% of the people would either not like it or be more in the middle ground. And so, never good to forward on something so close. So that's why you put a task force together. And those of you who can see, definitely a lot of people who were the first coffee chat when we kicked it off for families to engage in conversation. And that conversation led to being able to put together a very balanced task force, which I think is something that is a great strategy to use instead of just putting people that are gonna look at it from one point of view, but to put a balanced amount of people who would be for it in comparison to a balanced amount of people who would not be for it to start the process. So we started that process together and we came up with a shared goal. Gavin, go ahead. And really, what our common goal was, that we developed the first meeting was just to find the best possible and practical, practical school start and end times for students in our Monticello School District. While making decisions for students, we will keep the diverse needs of our families front and center throughout our research. It was really important for the group to add that part as we look, because we know we serve all types of families and we wanted to make sure that we considered what they may go through if we make any changes. So that was our common goal. Go ahead. And the next slide just shows the areas of research and discussion. And so, we started with the requirements regarding number of hours and number of days in a school year. Most people don't know that. And so, they think that we can make changes or that we do make changes our calendars based on our own, you know, personal preferences, but they are guided by statutory requirements. And then we started looking at length of school days. And these lists aren't in any particular order, but like looking at the length of school days... These lists aren't in any particular order, but like looking at the length of school days across the region. We're really looking at and partnering with our Hoagland Transportation Company, looking at district busing and looking at the current model of how we're servicing and busing students home. We also developed a couple other models that would work in delivery of our students to school and to back to home. And so we have a hybrid and shorter secondary model that would work under our current contract with them. And I'll just briefly show that here in a second. District expectations of instructional practices. So when you start talking about length of date, when you start talking about calendar, when you start talking about statutory requirements, you get into standards, you get into grad requirements, and you can really get down rabbit hole that maybe people in the public or community members wouldn't know, but us in the education field or us in the bus company, we do know those things because they are what are some of the guides or the goalposts for us every day. Then one of the things that, so instructional practices are really important. What are we doing with our time? What are we doing with our day? That's really important to make sure that if we make any changes, can we still do that? Would we have enough time? Do we have too much time? You want to make sure that you're meeting the developmental needs of your learners with any decisions that you make. And then finally, we want to, you know, we feel obligated to look at data and research on medical advantages of getting secondary students more sleep. That's where this came from. That's where, why any schools that have ever made a switch, that's why they've made the switch. Because they were, if the medical advantages of it swayed their, for their district to realize that the advantages for the secondary outweighed the advantages that they made losing when they made the switch for elementary. Next slide, please. So just some things that came on the table that before, as we developed, researched, or as we began to research, the first partner that you need at the table is you need your bus company at the table. And so our current times are up on the board under current. And as we look to make improvements without any big, huge sweeping changes or some that actually do have some sweeping changes, we were trying to minimize those and come up with solutions that fit under the contract with our Hoagland Transportation Company. So under the current contract, what could we do? How could we serve and get our kids to and from school? And so there are a couple proposals that come with very, well, I shouldn't say. They come with changes, but maybe not as drastic changes that we couldn't overcome. And so the first one is a proposed times with shorter secondary day. So it just got us thinking, could we do what we do, but do it in less time? And would that be conducive for the learner? Is, does more time equate to higher learning? And these are all questions then that you get down rabbit holes that you have to start researching as well. Because whatever we do, we want to make sure that we improve our, we can't make one improvement area for medical research and then make changes that hurt other areas. So the proposed time with shorter secondary day is something that, that we know that we could do from contract standpoint. We see other schools that have schedules like that. And so it could be something that is a potential option, but with it would come a lot of hurdles. And I will get to the next slide where I do, I'm going to say it here. I want you to know that when you leave here tonight, know that none of these are options that we know that we're going forward with. And we know that we would not propose, the committee believes strongly that doing something really fast and proposing a change for next fall would not give our, our educational folks the time that they needed to prepare for it. And so we do believe in what the research that we are doing will lead to a recommendation, but that recommendation isn't going to be for the fall of twenty twenty-three. Then there is a proposed times with hybrid busing. And hybrid busing I've listed on the next slide just because it, it was intriguing. It was something that Hoagland, Joel Conkel came up with. And you can go to the next slide, Gavin. But it's really involving students in farther away places to have K through twelve students on those buses. And the hybrid comes in how you, you know, how you pick up those students and in certain populated areas that are either farther out, combining them with a high density spot in the New York City. Joel, you're here. Anything else you would like to say about the hybrid model and how it could give another option that we haven't ever had on the table before?
Elementary kids are going to benefit, the far out elementary kids are going to benefit in the morning for a short time. In the afternoon, they're going to be little kids with, that live far out. So it kind of balances out because I know that one of the concerns from the, is that, boy, we live a long way away. Why are rides so long? Well, this fixes half. Hybrid them together, we take the, do a high density area, bring them to high school, get the high school kids and run to Clearwater Maple Lake, obviously go that way. So it fixes another problem besides, you know, be able to do a bus one day.
Just a new option that we haven't explored before that is good for us to pause and ponder. Next slide, please, Gavin. And I think it's just important to know what's next. So tonight's not about anything more than an update. And we're, the newsletter that's going out this Friday, we also have an update in there as well for families. But next steps, we're going to continue our action research and we're hoping to complete that by the end of March with three more meetings. During that time, we're going to do a student and staff survey. So we have some information from some of our very important educational stakeholders. And like I said, you know, three more meetings, bringing a recommendation forward, but knowing that we're really not going to propose any changes for this fall. Number one, we have a lot of things that are working in our buildings. And when you have a year that you've planned for in this past year, it's always nice to be able to duplicate that and repeat it so that we continue to work on something that we're familiar with before throwing changes. We had changed, scheduled changes during the pandemic a couple of years in a row. And so it's nice to be on a consistent schedule. Anything that we do is really, if we do anything at all, is really looking forward into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I think one of the things I'm most proud of as this committee is I think sometimes people came to that first committee thinking that the school district had made up their mind. We had not made up our mind. This is called action research. And that's what you do when you have a problem and you try solve it together with people. So remember the goal of the committee is trying to do the right thing by students. That's the core of what decision, whatever outcome we make has to have that at the core. That's the update. Any questions?
Decision, decision date, if it gets passed a certain date in the future, would it be pushed out again? Because one of the questions I received was, hey, preschool registration and non-refundable deposits and change after that and I can't get that back. So is there something the committee needs to look at is, you know, as, as we take new information in and make a decision, if it gets passed a certain date, then we can't, as you said hastily, make a decision or just get it pushed out again. So same with the Cog, all the other impact.
I'm hoping by the end of those three meetings that we'll be able to come forward with recommendations. So that would give families from April twenty twenty-three to August of twenty twenty-four to plan for changes that may give our educational leaders and staff time to respond accordingly to those changes.
That's if a change is made.
That's what, if a change is made, yep.
Any further discussion, questions, Superintendent Olson? Okay, thank you for that good update. And again, just to stress, the decision has not been made. And we have three more working group meetings and then we'll have another update at that point. Information back to. So moving on to teaching and learning, excited to have our middle school instructors here with us today. They're going to give us a STEM lab presentation. Like Sherber is going to open the discussion.
Well, I'll just start with thanking for the opportunity that tonight, we wanted to give a bit of an update on our STEM program. And then secondly, we're excited to kind of share some of the, we had a presentation today at the Rotary. I want to thank Tina for letting us elbow our way into the Rotary meeting this afternoon. Not quite sure how it was going to go, but it went exceptionally well. So thank you for that opportunity and thank you for Eric for being part of that. So those two pieces were our two things we wanted to accomplish. The gals brought some stuff here just to kind of give you a bit of a visual. I know Casey and Jamie and Mark, you guys had, did a little walkthrough a little over a month ago, our STEM program. And got a little bit of a visual for what we're trying to do. Little history on the program. We, we went into this STEM endeavor a number of years ago. We were in this room talking about our engineering standard scores on some of our tests. And with the recommendation from the board to take a, take a good, hard look at some things that we can do differently to get the kids to use some of the things that they were learning in their math, science and social and their, those STEM areas and apply them in a project oriented class. We started a number of years ago, Jeff Boardwell helped that, get that off the ground. And then Casey Munson came along once Jeff retired and moved. We also brought Jill Kudowski along here a number, a couple of years ago as well. But the world's changed and our programs changed significantly since then. They'll talk a little bit about the presentation. They're not going to show you the presentation, but a couple of slides, they'll just show what they shared today at Rotary. The very last slide was kind, will kind of show you the purpose of why we were there. One of the number one things we wanted to do was to establish partnerships with the community. One of the first partnerships we wanted to make sure we solidified, and we heard that from Casey and Jill, was with the high school. So I want to thank Tony and Becca for coming tonight because previous discussions with both in Chamber, they talked a lot about getting middle school kids more exposed to trades, more exposed to the fields that they may be interested in before they get to the high school. We tried some different things in the past with kind of, you know, fairly low budget. Casey and Jill kind of kicked the door down and invited Eric and I and Cindy into a room that we needed, we need to do something different. And they had some big ideas. But it involved an investment and it involved some courage and it involved a lot of change. I'm going to turn it over to Casey and Jill and they'll share a little bit about their presentation. They're the whole slideshow, but the very last slide, I'll kind of share with you all that with. So I'll turn it over to them.
Oh, awesome. Okay. All right. So I'm Casey Munson and I am the seventh grade STEM teacher at Monticello Middle School.
I'm Jill Kudowski. I'm the eighth grade STEM teacher.
And so we talked at Rotary today and just today or tonight as well, just to kind of give you a glimpse of what goes on in our STEM lab. So this, you can just see a quick snapshot. This was formerly the wood shop at the middle school. And so we have transformed it into our STEM lab. Students work in groups of approximately four on eighteen different STEM based modules. And we'll talk in a little bit more detail about what those are, but just to give you a glimpse of what that looks like. Jeff mentioned that previously in our STEM program, we would try to do hands-on activities with kids. Some of these might be familiar looking to you. They involve, hands-on activities involved a lot of, you know, cheaper materials that you could find pretty quickly. So popsicle sticks, rubber bands, marshmallows, spaghetti noodles, those types of things. But after doing so many of those with middle schoolers, they still weren't making some of those concrete connections about what they were actually supposed to be learning. So try as you might to try to explain to them all the things, all those connections they're supposed to be making. To them, it was still just kind of a fun building project. So we needed to take it to the next level and just make things more concrete for them and have them, you know, have some more hands-on experiences that seemed a little bit more real. So a couple of reasons why we wanted the change. First of all, we had this wood shop. You'll see pictures where it was just being used for storage. So after the industrial tech program was no longer at the middle school, that room was just kind of sitting there, used for storage. We also wanted to kind of switch our focus a little bit. We went really heavy into the computer science side of things, especially when COVID hit and we were all on our screens. But from what I saw, a lot of, we were just kind of losing kids. They were on screens all day. And so doing only computer science focus was, was getting a little bit tough for that age group. And then we also wanted something unique to middle school. So a lot of the engineering, like if you would look up different ideas online, a lot of the engineering tasks are either very elementary based or they're very advanced and written for a high school level. So we were looking to something that's unique to middle school. And here's some pictures, just really quickly, that's the lab for about five years, just used as storage. Our custodians helped us out a lot and they cleared everything out. Jill used it last spring to kind of test out the space for robotics. That's what it looked like after it was all cleared out. The custodians also repainted everything over the summer to help us get ready for this space. Our goal was to try to do something hands-on, I know it's dramatic, so. Try to do something that's hands-on where it's not just another class of sitting down and kids, you know, lecture style class. And so I'll have Jill just show here's what our first day looked like in the lab.
So this is the first day in the lab in fall of twenty twenty-two. As you can see, middle schoolers, we love big events. So again, we had a ribbon cutting ceremony. What you see in this picture is seventh and eighth graders because we're team teaching in the lab. So it looks like a lot of, a lot of students, but the lab is about double the size of a classroom. The current lab modules offered, there's eighteen modules, going into a few before I show some pictures. There's research and development, which middle schoolers love hands, obviously brought in some demos. We brought back the CO2 dragsters, which is awesome because when parents came in for conference night or guardians, they were able to show what they did in elementary, or middle school and high school, and we brought it back into now. Energy and power, home maintenance, structural engineering, alternative energy, dentistry, ophthalmology, sports medicine and computer graphics and game design. So how do the eighteen modules work? It's a ten day series in the lab and then we take a break and go back into our own classrooms, then another ten days. They're in groups of four, so seventh and eighth graders are both in the lab. But at the biomedical engineering station, it's four students of only eighth graders. Nursing will be four students of only seventh graders. We're not intermixing grades at each module. There is again ten days of content. On day one is background knowledge terminology. You saw up here there was home maintenance systems, there's a ton of tools. So we want them really to be able to identify each tool they're using in that module. Day two through four and six through nine is a lot of hands-on, design briefs, collaboration, terminology application. Day five and day ten are checkpoint tests and narrative writing on day five and day ten is again argumentative essays. We can go back into these as you can see each module. Starting with energy and power. Again, we brought in a socket set. I know Jeff loves this more than anything because you would be surprised at how many students do not know what this is before they step foot in our lab. As you can see, they're working with four cycle engines. They're learning the spark plug test, combustion or tests as well. It's awesome compression tests. They're really hands-on. You wouldn't believe how many bolts we've stripped though in this station. And the other really cool thing is as you can see in the tool set, they have to know the difference between a thirteen millimeter wrench and, or a socket and a eleven millimeter. So it's very cool to see the collaboration between both boys and girls asking them, it's a little too tight for me. Could you loosen it up? Then we have sports medicine. Again, the best part about this one, as you can see, we just did this on Friday. They were taping ankles, taping elbows on day two. And then they, we have a spine board, concussion testing, taping some fingers and again the arm on the top left or top right. It's amazing to see some of the football players come in and say, oh, this just happened to me. I think I have a concussion. Let me see if I can smell that or do the concussion test. The other really awesome thing, if you can see in the background of one of these pictures, there's a model of a foot, a model of a knee. If someone tears an ACL, you can really hands-on identify each module or each ligament on the knee. On day one, you start there and then move on. Medical imaging, you learn how to position someone for an X-ray. You learn, here we have some pins or screws in a hip. They're pointing, really identifying each picture. Nursing, you might wonder what this arm is doing up here, but again, they're drawing blood. They're using butterfly needles, tourniquets, sutures, doing all this stuff in hands-on nursing. My favorite part of this station, it's kind of funny, in middle school, they have, they put. put powder on their hands. They scrub it together and then we have soap. They wash their hands. They think they're all done. You bring a UV light over your hands and they're kind of surprised at how much dirt is still, or germs are still on your hand after that station. As you can see, we even use gloves to make sure it is very, very safe and what it would be like. Flight and drone technology. Again, in the bottom left, there's four students per group. They're learning how to control the drone off an iPad. Thank you, Jason, for the iPads. Criminalistics on the top right. Fingerprint cards, again, law enforcement or passport. It's really awesome for them to be able to test their own fingerprint and then we're relating some science standards in with the microscope. Again, right now, they're doing the difference between salt and sugar kind of on a microscope. We set up crime scenes. Again, I have up here the TPs. There is about seven different items on a crime scene. We set it up for each of the numbers. Biomedical engineering is in the bottom left. That is a leg, if you can't tell. Again, they're building.
They're doing a, yeah, fitting for prosthetic.
Yep. So, they're doing prosthetic arms, legs. They even have a STEM challenge where they have about seven supplies and they have to make a contraption for a prosthetic hand and how to pick things up with clothespins and things like that. Ophthalmology tests or ophthalmology is in the top right. Learning about color blindness. You also have about 13 sets of glasses that you try on, see how far you can see. Mr. Olson even came in one time, but we're not going to say what his vision on the vision test was. Dentistry. Again, I have another example of a clear job here, identifying teeth. They have a lot of different molds. They're taking imprints of the teeth. They're learning how to brush teeth. They're learning how to fill cavities. We even have on a day where there's a Dremel tool and a dental tile where they drill in. If it's yellow, that means you still have to get it out with plaque, but if it's red, that's blood. You went a little too hard on the Dremel. On the, on the top right is electricity and electronics. I brought in a multimeter or a voltmeter to test AC/DC current. You, there is even light bulbs where you can adjust the, adjust the current and see what light comes on. And research and development, again, this is the CO2 dragsters. Each student gets a kit. First, they design it on a piece of graph paper. Then they have it on a styrofoam. They have to make it out of styrofoam and then it's out of wood. On the bottom right here, you can see the student working. Lastly, these are kind of our newest additions. Home maintenance fundamentals and home maintenance systems. It's really a light bulb moment when students are able to do this. They plug it in, they have it on a light switch. As soon as that switch goes on and the light bulb turns on, they are amazed. A lot of times, it's funny because a parent will email or guardian will email and say, wow, my student is so proud and now wants to change some light fixtures in our house. And I don't know if I'd give them that green light yet, but they're improving. Again, they're stripping wires. They're able to connect with wire connectors. Home maintenance fundamentals. They're dry-walling, making sure that it's level. They have to hang up a picture frame or a bookshelf or a shelf on the wall and make sure that it's level. They stand back and really can, really can tell if it's level or not. Up next, we have a video. What I want you to watch for in this video is collaboration between all grade, or at their module, again, the four students really interacting. We even have a parent volunteer who came in and you'll be able to see that. But again, just the collaboration, not a normal classroom at all.
Students that you see being leaders in this classroom are not always the same as the leaders you might see in other classrooms. And so, I don't know, it just gives an opportunity for all sorts of kids to shine and that's what we really love. They're working with like the actual tools, so their understandings are deeper. And then we also, of course, want to connect them with the decision, the decisions that they'll make at the high school. So, you know, getting some experience for 10 days in a certain area. Now, when they go to high school, they might know whether or not they want to commit to a semester-long version of that class as well, so.
This last slide was just kind of an illustration that illustrated our purpose for going to the Rotary. The support partner pieces there, that is basically what we were going there. What we wanted, you saw some of the volunteers there. And as they're in the classroom, they provide, whether it's guest speaking or internships, mentoring, volunteering. But we are really asking for is their lifelong passion, what they do to get in the classroom and talk to kids. If you think about some of those memories that really stick and the learning that means the most, it's that emotional stuff. So, we're asking that community today, this afternoon, we just asked them to come on in, take a look, share your stories, especially if you're in the field of, of medicine. Jason Halverson was there. He's a doctor in town. I think he got a little nervous when he saw all the kids looking like they knew what they were doing with some of this stuff. But I had to remind him, our tent wasn't to make them think they can suture somebody up, but was to get them to feel for it. I mentioned the word mistakes. I mean, there's a million mistakes that are had every, every time you walk into that classroom about trying different things, but that's what middle school's about, getting hands-on and something. I think it was kind of neat what Casey had mentioned, some of the leaders in that classroom are the ones that are willing to dig in and try something and make mistakes at it. So, that support partner piece, I think it's, we totally underestimated when our presentation got over, the interest they had. We had a hard time getting out of there because there's a lot of people that were very interested in getting into the classroom. The second piece that we found very interesting too is they're very interested in finding different ways to support us financially as well, sponsoring one of the modules or just, just an overall donation. I know today, you guys got a chance to look at some of the community donations. There might be a day down the road. I know that a lot of our, our tickets were grabbed today. They just want to know how they can contribute because they see the value. And we had a couple of parents in the crew that, in the group that did more of a sales pitch than we could have ever done. There are people from the community who's, have been lifelong members, whose kids are out engineers in, in the, out in the country. They're looking at trying to bring them back in to get back into a classroom. They're excited about the programming and excited about the opportunities. And one last thing I'll just share, the other big theme that came from the folks that I visited with after today's presentation was about Jill and Casey and how well they articulated the message and shared what they were doing. You would be, you were very proud of them. I know Eric and I talked a little bit later. Something that we need to do more of is get folks out there, talking to community members, showing them what, what we're doing. And I think that will reap huge benefits down the road. We'd love to elbow our way into a lot more community meetings and kind of share that because we, I know Cindy had really stepped up with kind of moving some money around to make this work. It was a stretch and she really stuck her neck out to make this work this year. So, we, that means somewhere along the line, the money gets moved around, but we want to, we want to get to a point where it's consistent. I guess at that point, I'll turn it over for questions that you guys might have for these gals.
It's a one semester class for both seventh grade and eighth grade?
Yep, seventh and eighth grade.
So, do they have some, some choice? You have like 18 different areas. Do they, do they just randomly, randomly sorted or do they get to express a preference?
For me, usually for the, it kind of, it can be different, but for me, usually I put them, so like this round, I had them give me like, what are some that you're interested in? And then if they were, some of them are a lot more popular that they want to try, so I can't fit everyone into it, but I tried to do my best. Sometimes we do just put them into a group because we want them to work with different people and we want them to maybe get exposed to something that they don't already know a lot about because sometimes they'll stick to their comfort zones a little bit too. So, we kind of try to do a balance of us choosing and then them making some suggestions too.
And how many different areas did they get to explore over the course of a semester?
Yeah, so in seventh grade, they'll, right now, they have, we each do three, so they'll be in three and three, but next year, we're hoping to expand four. So, by the time that they're done with middle school, hopefully they'll get anywhere from six to eight. And the other thing I want to point out is this is a brand-new program and we're the first school in Minnesota to do this. So, we're actually having in a few weeks, another school come down and look at it and see what kind of modules they want to add to our school.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, if you haven't, you should go check it out. It's nice. I think it's a great opportunity. I like the part of the collaborative work, fostering the relationship between students who normally, maybe they don't even talk to each other and you get to meet and learn new skill. I think it's a really, really great class. Anything we can do to support it.
I think it's awesome that you guys are utilizing community members to volunteer, especially to give back in that profession. And I do think, like you were saying, that they're hungry to come and volunteer and give back in that way. I think that's incredible. I got to tour it and it's just the coolest room in the whole building. Sorry if other rooms are cold, but that is, it's so neat. I wish we had something like that when I went through school. It is top of the line. We're providing our students just an incredible education and experience that's going to follow them through life, so.
Thank you very much. I thought you articulated that very well also and would like to see you out and about even more talking about this. I think it represents very well what the community and the parents are looking for. I, I would like to say that if we had this 100 years ago when I was in middle school, that I would be in a different profession. In that regard, I, I think it's really good for these seventh and eighth graders to get exposed to these things early on. Thank you.
Like for me, the last two times that I've been asked to give state of the district, I got the high school going with Chamber recently and it was one of the part of what the high school was, was accomplishing with their career pathways. Same thing, Tina, said you want to do a state of the district and, and Jeff had been really asking and like, yep, you're done. And I do because we can get the experts in front of people to show what's really happening rather than a state of the district. Let's show the amazing that our district is doing and how we're connecting. I could even elaborate on the school district that's coming to visit is Hutchinson. Hutchinson is seen as a leader in career pathways and they are coming to our middle school to see the programming that only one school in Minnesota has. That is really important because our six-through-12 program has been trying to build and emulate and do some things that are hands-on, different types of apprenticeships that are being built, the education course, expanding CTE courses, but we are trying to do that, trying to do that to match what kids are interested in and what, now we have the backend program to get them interested. They're key ingredients for just building an amazing six-through-12 program. And like tonight, I will never forget that you have high school people here supporting. That is absolutely tremendous to show that support for each other. I am very proud of everyone in this room, especially watching that six-12 connection here tonight.
Thank you very much for all the time and. Well, we get to move on to another wonderful topic and we're going to invite up Mr. Craig Guyan and Katie Leitner to talk about a potential Washington DC trip approval for our high school students. And thank you, Mr. Guyan and Leitner.
Yeah, thanks for having us. We appreciate it. I'm Craig Guyan.
I'm Katie Leitner.
And we both teach social studies at the high school here in town. We're excited to be here, so thank you everybody for having us. This will be our seventh trip. It'll be my fifth trip, as Leitner's been on it.
Four times.
Four times. So, we're going to kind of go through a few things, talk about the company that we're working with or that we're hoping to work with and talk about our trip as well.
And I was hoping that the Legion's guys wouldn't leave because one other thing that they always do is pay for the bus to get the students to and from the airport. They give us money, so it provides transportation to and from the airport. So, that's another thing that the Legion does that probably nobody knows about.
Yeah, lots of good things going on tonight. We're fortunate to be here. So, um, next slide. All right, so just a little bit, we're going to talk about ourselves here just a little bit, talk a little bit about our background, who we're working with, some safety and support, what's all included and our process of reserving spots for kids.
Nope.
Hold on. All right, so a little bit about us. Like I said, I've been teaching here since 2009. Katie's been here since 2004. I currently teach.
Some of my former students are teaching the STEM lab.
Ah. I currently teach economics and careers.
I teach American history and CIS psychology.
And like we said, this is our fourth and fifth travel experience to DC. We're just excited to be with our students. Last year, we had Joe Roche and Jason Teleke go with us as well, as well as two former teachers.
Retired teachers came with too.
So, that was awesome. We had over 60 kids go last year and it was a great experience for our students with some pictures from some past trips. Here's a little quote. "The great force of history comes from the fact that we care, carry it within us, are unconsciously controlled by it. History is literally present in all that we do." I think this fits really well with kids getting out of the classroom, like we just heard from our STEM lab. And now they're experiencing history. They're out in DC seeing things, seeing sights and just to hear some of the things that they've talked about while on the trip.
Yeah, and it's just really cool. Like we went to Arlington National Cemetery and they're like, Ms. Leitner, that's, that Robert, that's Robert E. Lee's house that you told, that's how it started, you know? And it's just like, it's like clicking, like they're seeing it and putting it together, the lectures, and they're actually like seeing, living the history, I guess. So, like exactly what you're doing in the STEM lab, it immerses them in the subject area. And so, we're lucky to get to do that. Because we always joke, like, how do you even teach history in Washington DC? How would you ever stay in your classroom? Because you would just, right, be out and about all the time.
Take a field trip every day. This is from EF, just as an optional idea, an optional itinerary. We're going to go through our itinerary.
So, this is what we could have picked from.
And then there's options for students to do as well. We'll go more in-depth here in the next few slides about what we're looking at doing in 2024. So, day one, we always like to fly out as early as possible. We like to get on the ground. Last year, we were fortunate enough, EF ended up flying us out a day early, so we're there actually on a Sunday and we hit the ground running right away in the morning. We realized that, hey, this trip is for our students, right? It's not my trip, Ms. Leitner's trip. It's for our students who want to go on the trip. And when we get there, we leave as early as we can from the high school. We go down to the airport. We fly out usually on the first flight that we can head to DC. When we get there, we meet with our tour guides right away. On the bus, we have a guide with us the entire time who's been trained through EF to go on the trip. So, we hit the ground running. We head right to the National Mall and we spend a few hours there. We let students go in groups and pairs where they want to go see different Smithsonian's, things like that. I might love the Air and Space Museum, somebody else doesn't. So, that's why we give students that option to go see what they are interested in, to go see what they want to see. Because we all don't want to go see air and space. Maybe it's National Archives, maybe it's natural history, but we give students that option to go see what they want to see. From there, last year, we went to Holocaust Museum right away and that's very, very powerful. And you walk through, some students, it's two hours, some students, it's three hours and they go through, it's how powerful it is. students, it's three hours, and they go through, it's how powerful it is for each student to see that museum. And we go through that in that day. And then after that, last year, we were able to go see National Archives. We drove by, we had a little extra time. We say, let's stop in and walk through National Archives together.
And we were lucky, the lines weren't really long at all, and so that was a really cool experience for the kids.
So just some pictures from that. Here's us on the National Mall with our group. It was a little rainy, a little cloudy that day. It was a great time. One thing I was able to go do was the Futures Exhibit. This is a future taxi cab is what they're envisioning here about what things may look like. And that was something neat. That was something I hadn't been to. Here's a picture from the Holocaust Museum. Day two, and understand when we leave, and I want to just make this evident, we go from 6:00, 7:00 in the morning till 8:00, 9:00, 10:00 at night, and we want four full days for our students. With the money that you're paying, with the experience, some of these kids may never, ever go back to DC, and we want this to be the best trip for them. Day two, we got up early, went to Arlington National Cemetery. We like to get there early in the morning. It seems like fewer crowds, less people. We get to go see things. We get to go on our tour. Our guide kind of leads us through different areas that we go see.
And then we can also venture off. So like, this year, Jason and I took a group, Teleki and I took a group, and we found Ira Hayes, the famous Marine. We found his gravesite and led the kids that wanted to see the famous Marine in the raising of the flag picture, you know? And so you can kind of do for different things. Another thing that, like, I got emotional about is that we were at the changing of the guard in the Tomb of the Unknown, and right, very somber, nobody talks, and an honor guard came in. So some of the kids were kind of asking, what is that? And I said, well, that's when they're bringing veterans to honor. And some of our kids, on their own, formed a line and went through and were shaking the veterans' hands that were in the wheelchairs waiting to, for the next changing of the guard. And so it's this mix with like history and the old and the new, and so just really good life experiences for all the kids.
Yeah, and then we went to Mount Vernon, and we explored the grounds at Mount Vernon, and spent most of the rest of the day out there. On the way back, we did stop at Old Town Alexandria. We had a night tour of Old Town Alexandria, which you'll see here in a little bit. And then on the way back from there, it just fit perfectly where we stopped at the 9/11 memorial at the Pentagon at night as well. And sometimes we'll share our stories with our group from where we were on 9/11 on that day. Our guides tend to share their stories as well, especially since we've had a few that lived in DC during that time, and it's really powerful to hear their message as well.
And that one at night, we always try to do that one at night because of the lighting, and it's just kind of an amazing experience for the kids at night.
So here's just a few photos from this past year, changing of the guard, Kennedy, among other things that we're able to go see and go do. Here's a Marine Corps memorial.
So for all the people that don't know, because I'm a history teacher, so this is Ira Hayes, right here in the back. And so right after this picture was taken, he was brought home to go around and be like the war hero, right? Like sell war bonds, but he didn't feel like he was a hero because all his buddies had died. And so it's a story of Ira Hayes, and there's a famous Johnny Cash song about him, and just a famous Marine. So that's, sorry.
No, you're good. I love it.
So this is what we do when we're there, you know?
Here we are at Mount Vernon, in the grounds of Mount Vernon, walking around with our group. Here was dinner, and I just kind of want to talk about a couple of things here. On the top left, former student Sebastian Gardner. He now works out there with the FBI, and he was able to meet up with our students and be able to talk to our students. And it was really neat to hear his story, and it's awesome for our kids to hear. Here's a student, graduated from Monticello High School, who's now working in DC, working with the FBI. And that's really cool to see and to hear kids after a comment say, hey, that's something I'd like to do. And to hear kids say, you know, here's somebody who was just in their shoes 10 years ago. Look at what he's doing. You have that opportunity to go out and do whatever it is that you want to do in life. And to hear his story was absolutely exceptional. We had kids coming up, talking to him, asking questions throughout, and that was really neat and moving and impactful for our students. Here we are at night in Old Town Alexandria, and as Katie talked about, here's the 9/11 memorial at the Pentagon at night. And it's really neat as they go through about all the significance of the memorial.
Yeah, so because it's a memorial for both the people in the Pentagon and the plane flying, if they, if it's facing this way, they were in the plane, and if it's facing the other way, they were in the Pentagon. And then how it's set up is from the youngest, when you first walk in, it's the youngest, which was a three-year-old on the plane, all the way to the oldest that. And so it just, there's so much meaning, and so we try to like show the kids like all the different meaning behind every memorial.
Next thing, day three, right away, we went to the White House, and we were able to get a photo opportunity from the White House. We're not able to go inside or do anything like that, but we were able to get outside the White House. Then we went to Capitol Hill, the Capitol tours we were not able to do last year. We're hoping in 2024, seems like things are starting to open back up, where we'll be able to do a tour of the Capitol. We were able to go on the steps of the Supreme Court, went into the Library of Congress and let the kids explore that. Then we let them have some more time on the National Mall. After day one, it's great to hear stories from students. Hey, this is what I saw. Oh, where was that? And now day three, when we head back, they're able to go explore something that they weren't able to see right away. And no matter, how many times I've been there, there's still more to see. There's always more things to explore on the Mall. And then at the night, one of my favorite things is the night tour of the monuments. And I feel like this night, our group really comes together. You're there, this is day three, and you've had three long days, and kids come together and really bond on this night as we tour DC and the monuments at night. One picture is the World War II Memorial at night, which is absolutely spectacular. And as we go through, through the different memorials, you get to hear stories about why and how they're built, whether it's going.
Sorry, the last time we were there, too, they were doing a special tour for, it was this, a lady in her 90s, and she was like a real-life Rosie the Riveter. So the kids were all posing with her and taking picture and asking her questions. So it's really cool to like who you see there at the memorials and the kids interacting and asking questions.
Here's one at night of the Korean War Memorial as well, and to hear the story in the background. Why was it built? How did they build it? What was the meaning and the reason behind it, which is really cool to see. This was something that was pretty heartfelt and very moving. Here we are at the Vietnam Wall, and we were able to find a gentleman from Monticello, and we had our students go find that, found his name, which was pretty cool. So here's our students pointing to that as well. Lincoln Memorial at night as well. Here's on the steps of the Lincoln Memorial where Martin Luther King gave his "I Have a Dream" speech, and the memorial as well. Day four, so we pack up from the hotel, take all of our stuff, all of our belongings, and we head right to Ford's Theater in the Peterson House. We found that when we start here in the morning, less crowds, less people, we're able to go through this in a much more efficient manner, rather than waiting in long lines. And now you have kids waiting, and we had 60 kids, and we don't want to make kids wait. We want to pack it in as much as we can. Then we were able to head back to Washington Monument, see World War II during the day, and then we ended our trip in Georgetown. And they got to explore Georgetown a little bit and got to see different areas, architecture, college, and we let them go on their own during that time as well. Just some photos from that. Here's a booth from the Ford's Theater. Here's our Washington Monument as well. A little bit about, or some additional information for this year. Our window that we're looking at is April 22nd through the 25th. Couple reasons why we chose this. It's later on, right? It's in the spring. It's warmer in DC. We want to go when it's warm. We're outside a ton, and we don't want to walk around in coats and jackets when it's cold. This is after cherry blossoms, so it's not as busy, right? Shorter lines, kids are able to move around a little bit more freely. This school week, according to our calendar right now, is a three-day school week. So students will only miss three days of school instead of four, as well as teachers. So we're trying to be mindful of that, and that's away from testing. So if there's any testing, things like that, that happens in the spring as well. So we're looking to avoid that as well. So that's one reason why we picked these dates for our travel times. Why with EF? This is our second time working with EF. We've worked with a few other companies as well. We felt like we had a really good experience last time. They have places all over, especially in DC, they have some hubs just in case things happen. I have a direct contact with people at EF, so it's really easy. If we have to change something, we have to do something differently, so that helps. We've priced out different tours. This was the most affordable tour for our students that we thought, and they were willing to work with us so that we could see the things that we've kind of really molded our tour around.
We've always really liked their guides. Their guides were really knowledgeable, and if we wanted to switch something up, or the kids were like, oh, we would like, they were very helpful and knowledgeable. Their guides have been really good.
Yeah, with some tour support, 24/7 tour support. Our directors are with us, or our guides, so I always have contact. We all have contact with our guides. We have security outside the rooms every single night, so we go around, we do a room check, we meet our security guards. They leave us information the next night, all quiet. So it's been very, very good. We require background checks for all of us, but we have them through the school, and we use teacher chaperones. We don't use outside chaperones. We have our teachers go, students have connections with us, and that makes a big difference, right? To have that connection, if something comes up, they can come talk to us, and they're willing to say, hey, here's something, maybe something came up, whatever it is, but they're comfortable with us. They're comfortable with our department and our people that we've gone with. There's options for scholarships for our students and things like that that they can apply for if that's an issue as well. And there's personalized travel page and support. Everything essentially is included, our flight, round-trip transportation, the busing, lunch.
Breakfast at the hotel and a ticket for lunch, or cash for lunch.
Mm-hmm. And then dinner is included as a big group as well. So lunch, we can give them that option. Go to, here's some areas, here's some food trucks, here's things for you to have for lunch, personal learning guide, you can see what else is all included here with 24-hour emergency assistance and things like that. Our cost, right here's our cost, $14.49 full payment. Last year, it was $13.69, so it's an increase of $80. I thought was very reasonable, especially when you really look at leisure travel with inflation, has gone up more than this. So I thought that was very reasonable. We're presenting it to you today. You might be asking why today. We want to start to roll this out and get kids interested, get kids signed up. We want to put this in front of families as soon as we can, but there's other payment options as well. Let's not say, hey, we're going to leave here in six months. Now people have time to plan, families have time to plan, instead of just all send, oh, here it is, and it gives people more time to plan. So thank you. We can open up for questions that you have, so thanks for hearing our presentation.
Is there a limit of the students that can go?
Great question. So right now, one full bus is 40 students, so we try to start there. If we can get a second full bus, last time, we were able to, we were able to do that. So we say 40 is kind of the start, because that, and houses one bus.
Secures a bus.
Secures one bus for us. Otherwise, I think the next number has to be in the 70 range. Like I said, last time, I think we were at 63 with six chaperones, who were close enough. They said, hey, you're close enough, we'll let you get two buses. So that was very nice for them.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, well, and last year, we had like the COVID issue, so it was like you could sign up to a certain point and still get a full refund if something happened and you couldn't go. So that was like a time thing. So I don't know this year how that works for full refunds, but it's usually the company has a cutoff date for signup.
Then the only requirement's high school, right? So freshmen can go, freshmen sophomore?
We go sophomore through seniors. That's a really great question. Yes, we go sophomore through seniors. So when we start to do our presentation coming up here, it would be all current ninth through 11th graders. Even talking to a few juniors who maybe went as sophomores, there's a few that are going to sign up again because it's enjoyable and they want to go see more and explore more.
And that's our reasoning for go every two years then, because every kid will get it, will have that option.
At least once.
At least once.
Will every student that wants to go be allowed to go?
Yeah, as long as they, we haven't had any issues where a student wasn't able to go, as long as they were able to fundraise or pay the money themselves or whatever it is. Yep.
When will you decide what the itinerary is for the trip?
We will finalize it here once we, before we meet with all of our parents and things like that. My guess is within the next two weeks, three weeks, we'll finalize everything for what you saw.
And I don't think we're planning on making any, like, that is where we're going to stick around. Do you know what I mean?
But yeah, so we will finalize that probably within the next three weeks is my goal. Now, obviously, that can change with, can we get into the Capitol? Is it still open? Things like that. Dates availability for the Holocaust Museum. We were able to jump on, last time, Ms. Leitner and I were able to get tickets. Our company couldn't get, secure the tickets. We were able to jump on and have three different time slots for our students to go, so we paid for that, for our students to go to that.
And Sir Guyan called in and was like, get on a computer right now. Like, we're like, buying tickets like crazy, yeah.
So obviously, some of that availability, maybe the Holocaust doesn't end up day one. It might end up day three based on availability. Same thing with Capitol tours, depending on numbers and things like that, it might, and our representatives, it might depend on which day they're available as well, if they are available.
So you do try to beat up with our representatives?
That's who we get the tickets to enter the building from, their office.
If they're around, we try to meet up with them.
You have to apply for that a year in advance with social security numbers or anything? You really have to do that?
Yeah, there's usually, and our EF has usually done a night job, saying, hey, here's what we need, here's when we need it, in order to do. So, and I don't know if there's added security and things like that as well.
Do you know what your cutoff is going to be for registration?
So a lot of times, we try to sign up as many as we, kids as we can, as early as we can, for some of this stuff to say, hey, we have 50 travelers right now going. So we want to try to get as many as we can in the spring. We will talk about it again in the fall. Usually, it's late fall. Last year, it was December 21st, I think it was, just to have at least an idea. Obviously, for those travelers that sign up late, more of a lump sum payment. So we try to get as most of our kids to sign up now in the spring that we, for paying and for logistics.
And planning, yeah.
And the cost of the teachers and the chaperones, are you guys spending that cost? There's the request to get that covered by the school?
So for every 10 travelers that we get, we get a paid chaperone to go. There's no cost to school in that regards for that. So they do a nice job with that for us.
That's what EF does?
EF does that.
Yes.
Correct.
I was sharing with Mr. Guyan and Ms. Leitner before the meeting started tonight. I have a long history with EF. I have children that have been on tours through, not through Monticello. And as an example, they had a mishap at the hotel. When they checked in, there was no water, and EF literally had them in another hotel in two hours, the entire group. So I was extremely impressed with their ability to handle emergencies on the fly and that sort of thing. So I think they're really, they're the largest school tour company in the United States, and I think they did a really good job.
The water incident, was it ours?
Yeah, I was going to say.
It wasn't ours.
We were good.
It was many, many years ago.
And I do have to tell a funny story of getting out of Monticello, like bringing the kids there. So we were at the White House, right? Taking pictures and all these kids, and there's all this movement on the roof. One of our students is like, they must be doing some roof work. Like, those are snipers. Those are snipers.
Bless the hunt.
They must be doing a lot of work up there. We're like, eh, no.
I have one additional question that maybe you'll have to bump up to the EF tours people, but you know, the real ID is going to be in place by the time this tour goes next year, and how are we going to handle students? I know you probably don't have the answer to that, but it's just something that popped into my head that I thought we should probably ask that question, because some of our students will be over 18 at that point in time, so.
That's a great question.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll ask them for sure. I'm actually connecting with him tomorrow, um, just to go over things. So I will bring that up. Thank you.
I heard incredible feedback the last trip that went, that it was awesome from students. Um, so I think you guys do a fabulous job with that and I'm grateful that we have this for our district.
Yeah, my daughter was on the trip last year and I heard the behavior, the students was impeccable.
We got complimented everywhere we went. Even our EF leader was like, it's, our kids always have just like risen to the occasion. They've just, we get compliments everywhere we go. We've always had great kids on this trip. And like Mr. Guyan said, it's kids hanging out that wouldn't, that don't normally hang out in school. So it's really kind of cool to see all these different groups intermingle on this trip.
This is an incredible opportunity and I just hope that, um, we'll make sure that every kid has the opportunity to. Any additional discussion from anybody?
Yeah, one more question. Um, what percentage of the sites would you say will be full group versus optional for the kids?
Good question. I would say our full group, um, kind of going back to the beginning, National Mall, we go there. And they get to go choose their, their Smithsonian or where you want to go. Um, Mount Vernon, we're together, um.
Pentagon.
Pentagon, we're together. Uh, Alexandria, we're together.
Holocaust.
Holocaust, we're together. Uh, I might say Mount Vernon.
Arlington. But we're together, but we're all in little groups. So just like the main big sites that we have to have tickets for kind of.
Yeah, the Capitol tour would be together. Ford Theater, Peterson House are together as well.
Halfsies then?
Again?
Half and half? Does that sound about right then?
Yeah, probably half and half, maybe. Sounds about right.
But I think, um, when you talk about optional, I, I don't think they allow any kids to remain back at the hotel playing video games, I think.
No, and these, and like, we've, the kids are, they're tired by the end of the day. Cause we're like, we're stopping at one more, you know, if they're like, wah, because we, we are on the go from morning till night. And, yeah.
We talk to them, hey, just bring a backpack just to carry on. We don't want anything lost. And we just want to, once we're off the plane, we're going and we're meeting our guides.
They've been also really good about like food allergies for like, um, we've had some very specific dietary issues. And they, they've been great, like providing special meals for kids and stuff like that as well.
And, and the dinners we do together, a lot of times, uh, we want to go somewhere unique. We're not gonna go to a, uh, Applebee's or things like that. We want to go somewhere. What's that?
No Subway.
No Subway.
No Subway.
No. So go to somewhere that's unique to the east coast or to, to the DC area.
Anybody else?
I think it's a great place to, to see. I've been there twice. I would go back in a heartbeat. If you've never been there, it's, it's a place to definitely check out. So I second your emotional response.
Hey, yeah.
Of the sights, especially the, uh, the tours at night on there. That's, that's quite a sight to see, so.
Okay, well, this is an action item for the board to approve, um, the DC trip for April of twenty twenty-five.
Or twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
For myself.
You're good.
Um, using EF Tours as the tour provider. Do we have a motion?
I think we'll approve the tour as presented by Kathy.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Tonight's all about letting custodians lead, letting teachers lead, letting principals lead, letting our people just do their thing. And empowerment and innovation and leadership is shining. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all. So thank you for the time. Appreciate that.
Okay, moving on to the agenda to item C, Achievement and Integration Grant. This was originally going to be a, an action item tonight, but we moved it to a review item. And we're gonna have Cindy Fosh and give us some background information on that.
Um, I can find it on here. Let me out.
You want Gavin just to click for you or you?
And maybe you can click for me, cause I don't see it on the iPad. Okay. So I'm just here to, um, present our final recommendations for the Achievement Integration Goals and Strategies that our team came up with. And so after our last board meeting and then after I submitted our ideas to MDE, to Vanessa Mo, who is our, uh, MDE expert assigned to our district, I, I submitted our plan to them and then took your ideas. And then we came back, uh, we met one more time, our Achievement Integration Team met. And, uh, kind of have some final recommendations for you. So remember that the purpose of this grant is to, uh, pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable education opportunities and reduce academic disparities. So those are specific, uh, goals and purposes for this grant. Go ahead. Uh, here's the proposed budget and, uh, we have about, well, initially we thought we had three hundred sixty-three thousand, six seventeen, um, with an estimated increase approximately to three sixty-six or so. That's how we created our budget. We have to make sure that we have at least eighty percent that goes to district service, direct, uh, to student services. And it has to be no more than twenty percent for professional development. You can see that we're at fourteen point five four. And then it has to be under ten percent for admin costs. And that's for, um, like taking care of all of the administrative work that goes behind the scenes, submitting grants, um, getting data, so forth. So we're only at four percent there. So that's our proposed budget. And then you actually have a copy of the detailed items of the budget attached to your board document. The positions that are funded with our A&amp;E grant, as far as, uh, what we're proposing right now, our one point O District Literacy Specialist. Half of the district social workers salary will come out of the A&amp;I grant, others, uh, the other salary. Tina can talk about where that comes from. Uh, instructional coaching, that, that person works with our new teachers, new to district. Uh, seven grades, um, or secondary six through twelve. And then we have another budget where we take the elementary instructional coach salary from a different budget. But from the A&amp;I budget, we have instructional coaching for secondary. Family liaison, um, advocate and interpreter, uh, point nine of her salary. So ninety percent of her salary comes from the A&amp;I budget. Math tutor at the high school and then also credit recovery at the high school, point three position for each one comes from this. And then a halftime reading coach. Uh, we will have more reading coaches than just a point five. But point five of one of the positions will come from the Achievement and Asian, uh, Integration Grant. Go ahead. I'm just gonna run quickly through this is, uh, remember this is just a reminder of the planned components. We have to have school board approval, which we will seek next time that we meet. Um, we have to have, uh, input from the multi-district collaborative, which I already received. So we went, I went through this with that committee. That committee is made up of all of the districts that surround St. Cloud that participate in the A&amp;I grant as, as well as St. Cloud. So we all shared our plans together, uh, and gave each other advice on our plans. Remember our goals have to, uh, we have to have at least one goal in each of these areas, an integration goal, achievement disparity goal and a teacher equity goal. And then, um, we actually have five goals, but, so we have to have one in each area at least. Uh, I will go through with you, uh, what the goals are and the strategies that are gonna support them. In addition to that, what I'm not gonna go through, but they're on the plan that you have, are the key indicators of progress, specific measurements that we're going to be taking all the way through as we go along, um, throughout the next three years, measuring our achievement. All right, next plan. So I'll just go through the goals quickly. Goal one is to, um, the percentage of students who qualify for free reduced rate lunches and students of color in grades three in our district who are at or above grade level benchmarks will increase to seven, seventy percent. So we're going to give ourselves three years to get ourselves up to seventy percent, um, for those populations that are at risk right now. Uh, because our data shows that those are the populations that have the lowest benchmarks right now. So sixty-one point one percent right now for free and reduced and sixty-two point seven students of color. And we want to raise those both to seventy percent. So some of the things that we plan to do is we are going to implement new language arts curriculum that would, will be good for all students. What I really want you to notice that all of the strategies that we have are strategies that are, um, implemented across the district for all students. They're not for specific groups of students or anything like that. Everything will be good for all of our students that you see on here. Um, so integrating a new comprehensive curriculum, we're, we're on our second year of really examining that. We're working with MDE and with the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement to really nail down what's gonna be the best possible curriculum that we can purchase. So I've already talked to you once about that. So we'll be doing that. And then next year we'll be looking at grades six through eight. So that's one of the first things. Then intensive training and coaching with our teachers. So bringing in reading coaches who will work one-on-one, model in the classrooms, work side by side, do fidelity checks. Make sure we're really implementing this curriculum to the best way possible so that we know we're gonna get the results we're looking for. Um, and then increase family outreach. So we're really looking at increasing, um, preschool enrollment and preschool readiness with the groups of students that, um, tend not to have, uh, a hundred percent participation. So we're looking for increasing the diversity of our, uh, preschool enrollment right now. It does not at all match the diversity of our district. And so we're missing populations of students that we need to find a way to reach. And that's what we're gonna be doing with family outreach. We also want to make sure that we're giving all students who are ages three and four access to preschool when they maybe don't already know that they have, uh, access to preschool opportunities. So we need to be able to test them and find them. Um, next page. Goal two is to, um, so the first goal was really to look at all the way up to grade three. So what can we do grade three and below to really get those students ready and get them up to benchmark? Now we're looking overall at the whole district, so grades three through ten with reading proficiency. And what are some of the things we can do all the way across the district, all the way up to grade twelve? So improve reading intervention programs all the way up to grade twelve, uh, instructional design and delivery improvements. So what can we do with our instruction all the way across the board as far as evidence-based literacy practices, all the way up to high school? And then, um, also professional development with cultural competency and instructional strategies to meet the needs of all of our learners. And then the number six is increased family engagement. So strategy number three was to increase, um, inclusion and this is family engagement. So we want to really find ways to get more families in our community or our, on our committees, involved in our schools, volunteering, doing all kinds of different things. So family engagement. Next one. Increase the enrollment of students, uh, free and reduced lunch and students of color in educational enrichment opportunities. Those enrichment opportunities are access to rigorous courses. They are student participation in extracurriculars or leadership opportunities across our district. And you'll see some of the different, uh, strategies that we're gonna be doing here as well. And then cross-district integration opportunities. This is our integration goal right here. And that is where we are able to get, to get together with classes from St. Cloud and Foley and Mercory and Becker and Annandale and all the districts that, that we participate with. Get together and do cross-district cultural activities. Next goal. Goal four is to increase the percentage of students, uh, who qualify for free reduced lunch and students of color who will graduate in four years. And again, you can see some of the baseline data here. And you can see some of the rates that are lower than, uh, we have a ninety-three percent graduation rate. But those population groups are lower, so we want to work to get those up. But across the board with all students, we're gonna have an attendance intervention plan that the high school is gonna be working very hard on. Um, they're gonna be implementing, uh, ways to monitor attendance data. They're gonna implement the check and connect program and that's through the U of M, right? Yep. So the U of M has a, uh, very good program called Check and Connect where it, it, it enables youth to partner and make relationships with students and their families uh, to foster relationships and bring them into school and help improve that attendance rate. And then, um, they have some survey data that they're gonna use here. We're gonna have, um, improvement in ALP credit recovery and remediation by increasing parent outreach here as well. There's, uh, four goal, four strategies underneath this one. So if you flip to the next screen, you'll see the other two. Go ahead. There you go. Peer tutoring and mentoring. They already started a peer tutoring program there, but it's an expansion of that peer tutoring program, not only to identify seniors who need additional support, but also identify students who can proactively come in and help improve that peer tutoring program. Um, career and college readiness, identify seniors who are at risk or off track for graduation and connect them with the supports that they need. And then also, um, career counseling, starting in grades eight through twelve. And then the last goal is to increase access to racially diverse certified staff in Monticello Public Schools to more classly, or more closely, uh, match our demographics. So you can see that our students of color is eighteen point eight, but our certified staff is one point eight. And we really need to, um, and this is true of all districts across the state. We are really trying hard to diversify our staff. And so some of the things that we're doing is access to our, uh, pre-teaching coursework. So I think Eric mentioned earlier, the internal education courses. We also have youth internship courses. We have, um, youth services, different ways that students can become in the pre-teaching kinds of coursework. We're also developing a partnership with St. Cloud State through the Teacher Education Residency Program, where we will bring more, um, teachers of color into our district to do field experiences and student teaching. And then the last one is cultural awareness, training and programming across our district. So those are the different strategies. We have sixteen strategies, five goals, sixteen strategies that we're hoping to implement over the next three years to see improvements in our district. Any questions that you have right now? We'll be bringing this back on March sixth, um, for more discussion as well.
Yeah, I'll go first. Uh, we talked about this three weeks ago a little bit, got into some of the details. Um, I tried to sit back and listen today rather than take notes and keep up with you on numbers and whatnot. All I hear is color, color, color. And I don't, once again, I don't think that we want the young people in our school district to look at color. I don't think we want to be worried about it. And so it feels like going through that, the purpose of it is to align whatever percentages we see with who we employ and who attends school here. I don't see how it's in our control to make that happen to the percentages that we've seen before. And it concerns me how focused we are on color. So I caught one thing there at the end, that you said that the diversity gap or the difference between the community and the employees in the district exists throughout the whole state.
Mm-hmm. Probably the whole country.
Okay. How are we gonna fix that here?
Baby steps. By just doing small things that we're doing here. Small things, by inviting people to come and see what our district is like, come and work in our community, help them feel welcome through all of our, um, onboarding that we do. Through, we have a teacher mentorship grant right now that we got through Pelsby, uh, that helps us mentor these teachers and help them feel welcome. And there, there are many different things that we can do to help, uh, recruit and retain, uh, teachers of color. Because we, we would love to have a more diverse staff.
I don't disagree. Um, if I'm recruited to come explore a district, how am I to believe that I'm not only there for my color?
Well, we're, we're not just hiring based on color. You have to be qualified. You have to be the top candidate or you have to be one of the top candidates. We're just not going out and just randomly picking.
And you're identified X number or plan.
Could all use their great terminology.
Um, you identified certain positions. And I got a message today and I think one of those positions was already known who this would be. How was the selection process made?
Which, which one are you referring to?
On the, uh, it would be the, be an instructional coach that fits, because I asked about, um, some of the insurance questions that I saw. So then my question is, if you already have someone selected, A, what was the interview process? How many people did you go through? What were the requirements that were set forward to select this person? And how many people actually knew about this selection process? Cause I believe all these people already picked out, or no. Because I believe all these people already picked out, or no.
Some are already involved in the plan right now. So they're already hired.
They already have a position. We have that position in our district, and they're already in it. Doesn't mean they're hired at that position. Just means we already have that position in the district and they're employed in the district.
But are they the right person for this job just because they're in the district?
You have to go through every hiring.
So that's kind of my question.
Hiring's the same for every interview. You have to go through interview process, vetted through HR, everything's the same.
But if I have a position here that doesn't show any...
We follow union, we follow, like we, like Katie just left, but we follow our standards that we have to, contracts, and we beat those every time. If not, you would be talking about a grievance at the table, and you're not talking about a grievance.
I don't want to...
We have processes that we follow. So I'm just trying to share that, that we have processes that we follow. So the questions that you're asking are irrelevant because we follow contract processes to hire the best candidate every time.
So this is our second round that we're hoping to participate, the Achievement and Integration Grant. So we're just ending our three-year grant right now. So three years ago, many of these positions were created and those people were hired. And you can retain those positions if those positions are still relevant to your new goals, which they are. And so we're just going to continue to fund part or some or all of these positions that have been already in place and already very important to our district. Without these positions, we would be in trouble, frankly. There are several of these positions that are very key components. And the people in those positions are the best people for those positions.
Okay, see, they just weren't like handpicked. Like, we think Sally would be perfect for this position. They absolutely went through and...
That's why I'm asking.
Right. I understand what you're asking.
This is all the information that I received on it.
Yeah.
I see that, I see these requirements. We want to get the best, we want to do this. But then I see a list that essentially everything's already here.
Right.
So that's how I interpret it.
In the budget proposal, everything's there, right?
I wanted to ask questions.
No, I'm just wondering, is it the budget proposal that you're talking about?
On the workbook.
It's in the... Yeah.
Yeah.
I would just like to answer your question, like, because I think we have board members that are really dedicated to helping students raise their test scores. In fact, I think it was a platform that some said during, when I watched you guys in presentations. And so when we zero in on our students and the data that we can get from them, and if those students need help, that's actually the purpose of this plan, is that's why the state gives you that money so that you can look at your data. And if it shows that the data of students in specific cell sizes need help, make your plan to help those cell sizes achieve more. And I would think that, like, this plan does that. It looks at those cell sizes. It looks at making sure that there's a overarching goal and then strategies and key progress of indicators to raise those students so that they can achieve all they can. So it's really looking at data and helping an overarching goal that I know that we all want.
I think it's important to recognize, too, that the goals weren't just something Cindy just was like, I'm going to come up with. It's all based on data that's specific for our school district that we have. And that's how we get to build that goal, specifically targeting those right now that we've identified in our school district are in need of additional assistance.
So about 10 years ago, all the testing we do, right? We came back, special ed scores were in the 70th percentile, math for special ed, English for special ed, 70th percentile. So as a board, what did we do? We hired more assistants, math instructors, English instructors, to get our special ed test scores up. That's what we did. Because that's what we needed to do to get our... The goal was to raise these test scores to an appropriate level statewide, meet requirement. So that's something we did. I don't... All we're looking at here is we're saying, these are low scores in our district. We're not going to have a classroom of students of color, and if they're students of not color, saying, you can't participate in that class because this is just for these students of color. That's not what we're going to do.
No.
These are dollars that are going to go to everybody in the district, a reading specialist, instructing specialist, a social worker. These are dollars that are going to everybody. The grant is written that way. And a frustrating, I'll be honest, frustrating part for me is a referendum's voted down in this district, and I received multiple emails saying, there's other things you can do. You can go for grants, you can do this, you can turn off the power at school at night, you can, you know, only have half your lights on in the school, and then that will save you money. And you need to make, you're not writing any grants. So we told the admin, write grants, go get grants, okay? I don't know what else to do. If we want to run another referendum, I'm fine with that, but then let's come up with $363,000, okay? This isn't primarily focused on students of color free and reduced lunch. What if it said free and reduced lunch and gifted talent to students?
Can we just do all students? Why do we have to...
Because that grant is specific to this.
It's broken out that way.
Because the statute, and that's 124(c) 861, if anybody wants to pull that up.
Is attached to the statute.
The legislature wrote the requirements the way they did, and the Minnesota Department of Education wrote the grant the way that they did. We don't have control over that. I've talked to two of our legislators about the wording in that particular set of statutes, and that would have to go through a repeal process. And none of our legislators sit on those currently, and that's not a priority at the legislature for this session. So we are stuck in a situation where if we want to compete for the money that's available, we have to play by the rules that we don't have any control over in the wording of the statute and the wording of the grant. We cannot independently take the word "students of color" out of the grant because it is part of the reporting and fulfillment requirements of the grant. So we can either have the grant and go for it, or refrain from having the grant. That's our only choice. So we're not a business. We can't increase our revenue by changing our product somehow. We are in a hat-in-hand position every single time going to the legislature to ask for money or going to our board to ask for money. I don't like the way the statutes are written. I think they're terrible. And they put us in a position that we're in right now, where we have to explain to the community why we have to use terms like "students of color" that make it look like we're doing something that we're not. And I've explained that over and over and over, and it's hard to. I'm very resentful that my legislature has put me in the position of defending this. And it really is to benefit every student that needs help. They should never have put these strings on it, but they did.
So this reading coach benefit, this .7, any student can go to a person and ask for advice, ask for help, ask for...
Reading coach.
There's no checklist to say, hey, you're a student that's on a free and reduced lunch, I can only help these students on this checklist?
Correct. And like, I think it's important to put that list of staff members back up there because that's what Casey's alluding to. If you can put that group of staff back up, we have school representation on our committee. We have a committee that has admin, has teachers. It's a committee trying to look at data and to truly get at some of our district goals. And like, these positions can get at our district goals for all students. This is just a plan that we are able to fund these positions for, to help all students, but they also address the need within the strings attached that Kathy was talking about, whether you like it or not. For me, I love it because I'm able to write a plan that helps all students. And all students need a champion, they need an advocate. And you guys are school bookers, kids now. All kids need to see you standing up for them and bring these positions to the district with that $386,000, $363,000. I can't see, my eyes are really bad. Like Jill was saying, I would have not passed last year, and I'm not passing it here now. But it's just important to look at those positions. Those positions will affect all students, all teachers. They're support positions to help people do their jobs and do them well. And I think it's our job to support that and bring that forward so that our kids can be the best versions of themselves, our teachers can be the best versions of themselves, really addressed that goal through these positions.
So what's next, is my question? You know, we're complaining about a legislature that forces us to play a game that we don't agree with. We'll publicly say we don't agree with what this says, but we're willing to bend the knee to get $366,000.
We have a choice. We can take the money or not take the money.
I understand that.
That's our choice.
If we take this money, then that legislature is now more aggressive than ever before in this state. What will be the next grant requirement?
There's 171 school districts out of 888 school districts in the state.
No, only three, four.
What's the total? So approximately one-third of the school districts in the state are eligible either because they are racially isolated, and that's a minority population, 20% or more, or their boundary touches a racially isolated district. We have a tiny portion of the Monticello District that's in contact with the St. Cloud District, and that makes us eligible or volunteer for the program. Am I correct?
Correct.
Did I have that correct? So there are three ways that a school district can decide if they're going to participate in A&amp;I. And I would urge you to read the statutes. We can even pull those up if you want on the board there. But this is, we don't have control over fixing the language that's in the legislature this year or probably even next year. That's a long process. So we have to work within the constraints that they've given us. So we can take the money or not take the money. If we don't take the money, that's $386,000.
$63.
I'm sorry.
However, hundreds and some odd dollars that we won't have. I've asked the question, what if we don't meet our benchmarks? Are they going to take the money away from us? Are they going to fine us? Are they going to penalize us? Right now, the answer to that is no.
No.
We don't know if that's going to change.
Right now, it's no.
We don't know.
Yeah. But my concern is if we say yes to this, then the next is the next step. Okay, now you have to meet this. And now, now we are making decisions based on color because we're willing to get money. And then what's the next group that they're going to ask us to cater to? And pretty soon, what do we stand for? That's my concern. Where does it end? And I don't have a problem.
It's not something this body can fix. We can't fix that in this body.
I don't think our legislatures care. And I don't even think they know we have, we're having discussions.
They do. Oh, yeah. They probably like it.
I think it's low on their priority list, but I don't think that...
I'll agree with that. I think they know, but they don't care.
No.
I'm with you.
That's, and I, I don't know how... I mean, we've had multiple meetings with our legislatures and asked them to come to meetings, and they don't. I mean, we've, they've set up, our legislatures, not to get off topic, our legislatures have held meetings for us to go to them and have them show up for their own meetings that they're hosting. So, sorry.
I think next steps for our district would be to get Cindy out because she went through two and a half hours' topic two weeks ago. This wasn't the first time that we talked about this, and she's done a great job twice now. And so if you want to talk about this individually with me so that I know where you're going to stand on the date that we both appreciate that, because that's that transparency of you being where you're at. Kathy and I did that last time, the last session, that we approved A&amp;I at a board meeting. And we got to a spot where we disagreed on a lot of things, but we agreed on a lot of things, too. And if that's what we can at least get to, that would be, I think, doing a lot for our students.
We will. And I think it was clear three weeks ago where I stood on this. And this is basically the same thing we talked about three weeks ago.
I thought you left at a good spot, if you...
We left at a spot where I understood that you agreed that we're playing a game and you're willing to play a game. I didn't say I'm willing to play a game. I understand that it's a game.
Couple of board members that were on the committee, I think we thought we left at a better spot than this. And so I'm okay to be here. I'm, I don't worry about being in this spot. I say, good, let's talk. That's what we can do, that's what we can control. There's things that we're talking about here, we're what-if-ing things that we can't control. And those are the types of things that we can waste our money, or we waste our time and effort, or we can, like, give back time and start to give it to the people who are doing these work, doing the good work across the community, like things that we heard today. That's what I want to see. I want to do, I want to highlight more of that. And we can with those positions. Hold us accountable for those positions and what those positions do, not what if we're going to do if we accept this money. Let's look at those positions and what will they bring the district? That's what we should, I think, hold ourselves accountable for because it's what we can control. All the other conversations are things that we can't control.
So I think what's left?
Well, it's not...
No, I mean, next week, next week.
I just struggle with knowing that we've identified groups of students that need additional assistance and that there is funding that's out there to help support not just those groups of students, but all students. And so that's what I struggle with.
I think at a minimum, the school would have to put out a statement stating that it goes to all students because the public just wants me to be recorded, but the public is just going to see those headlines out there. And I don't have free and reduced through this exact thing, or I maybe if I was free and reduced and now I'm not, so now I'm going to lose this benefit.
We've been doing this locally, so I know you believe that maybe there's a community, large group out there that doesn't support the things that come from this. And maybe that's true. Maybe it's a small group that have people...
Just restating.
Because we've been in this plan. This is our third session to be in this plan. So nine, the first one wasn't three years, but so we're seven and a half, eight years into this. So while, you know, I don't think, once again, just like the legislators, I don't know that they're as intrigued by this, otherwise I thought maybe I would have heard of it seven years ago. I think it's a small group of people that are having our ear and not looking at those positions, and they're the ones that maybe don't understand that it's helping all students. But hopefully, you know, that list right there is something that will be public, and hopefully it will be public. We will publicize it, we'll put it in a newsletter, we'll celebrate those positions coming to our district. I see some teachers, some admin out here, some former teachers, some parents. I think they're going to be pretty excited. I'm seeing some head nods of people that would want those positions so that their job becomes easier and students can go further. So, I mean, that's my take on it.
I think we're going to give it maybe another 20 or 30 seconds of discussion, and then we'll move on on the agenda because we are going to cover this on March the 6th at our next meeting. So does anybody have any wrapping up comments?
Is there any language that's allowed to be changed in the... I heard it called a plan, a grant, whatever the proper terminology is. Are we, are our hands tied with what we say? Because anything that passes as a board, I want to be able to stand behind when push comes to shove and to be able to say not only to the administrators and the teachers that, yeah, we did everything we could to get the funding to support the students, but also to all the parents that may ask why we bent the knee or why we made a decision or why didn't you bring back a referendum? Because there's probably two groups. And I understand what you're saying, Jeff, where people get upset we didn't pass the referendum. So go get the grants that are out there. Is there any wording that can change? Because my concern is that, you know, we just basically said, well, if you don't pass it, then you're the bad guys. And let's kick the can down the road for a week, and we'll come back here next week and what?
I would urge you to make a list of your questions, and we'll try to work on that. And then we'll bring it up for discussion again on March the 6th. So I think we probably need to move on the rest of our agenda tonight. We're not going to solve any of these issues at this point in time. So let's all make a renewed commitment to make the questions that we can... that we can constructively work on at our next meeting.
If you gave those to me ahead of time, you know, I think, like I said.
I'll probably give them to Kathy ahead of time, when we can have the board discussion. It's a board vote, right?
Right. But you can't have, you know, hey, I'm trying to make sure that you can't have, like, a whole board discussion out there, and just make sure.
Okay, everybody take a deep breath. We're going to move on to number nine, innovation and leadership. Um, we, um, I'm going to have Superintendent Olson discuss adding the acting board chair and the board chair to our authorized contacts for legal services. It's something we probably should have done in January, but we just found out recently that we needed to add that, so.
Yeah, so something that we've always done is we, we look at past agendas pretty frequently, and we.
I was just asking, do you just need someone to read it and introduce it?
No.
Okay.
Um, and so when we brought that forward at the, um, first of the year, um, this, we've always just done the specific people from the district, but in talking to our legal and MSBA, they said the school board chair should also have that, that privy. So that's what we're going to bring forward.
Anyone acting, anyone in the acting board chair position, so.
So I think we're bringing it forward here tonight.
So I just need to make an action. Add our board chair and active board chairs authorized contacts for district legal services.
So a motion was brought by Jeff Hagley to add the board chair as acting, and acting board chairs that authorize legal contacts, seconded by Casey. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes five, zero. Moving on to B, we need to assign an alternative learning, uh, I think that should be ALP, ALP program, Alternative Learning Center, or Alternative Learning Program, or liaison. We do have liaisons that were identified at the January meeting for each of our buildings and programs. We omitted the ALP and need to add that. So if you have any comments on that.
Something that the ALP needs, uh, love and support too.
I make a motion to approve the ALP board liaison.
Seconded.
Motion brought by Jeff Hagley, seconded by Jamie Seben. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes five, zero. Um, are we going to do that assignment off the meeting, or bring it to the next one, or do that?
Assignment.
Yeah, the person.
Oh, um, I think we can bring that committee sheet forward.
Yeah, because I'm the only one without a, in a building at the moment. Um, so I'll probably be filling the ALP role. So moving on to school board recognition, Mr. Olson.
So I, um, a couple of recognitions here today, but for me, this first one is something that a lot of people don't know. Each February, MSBA has a sponsored School Board Recognition Week to recognize school board members for their commitment to Minnesota's public school students. Um, and so in 2023, the, uh, we're in the whole month of February, today being our first public meeting in February, I think it's important for the public to understand what you guys do every week, up until the end of the month. But when I look at a bulleted list, I started thinking about all the things that you do. Think about the one to five to three hours of reading from me every week, to make sure that you understand what's going on in the, in the school district and have an opportunity to ask questions. The school district policies that we bring forward, take a lot of work behind the scenes, is a consistent one to two hours per week. Prepare for school board meetings, end up in the neighborhood of three to six hours prior to every meeting. Ten school board meetings per month, two of them, um, and last, like, the last one, four and a half hours. And, you know, this one, uh, tonight, we'll, uh, look at, um, you know, maybe two and a half, maybe three hours. And we have a budget meeting after, so people don't understand that we have subcommittees. Uh, it's on a policy or, or a budget committee, that's one time a month, like Kathy was just talking about, in structure, everybody sits on anywhere from one to four additional district, regional, or state committees. Uh, and those can meet anytime between two to, uh, one time per month, but anywhere in that two to six hours of, of proper work. Um, you're held accountable, um, you know, you hold us accountable, you bring forth a, a policy and budget to the, for the district. In addition to these monthly specifics, there's also the data, reading emails, supporting the community individually to be seen in. Um, you're at activities, you go to different programs, you learn about lots of things that, you know, the general public always know. Uh, just a, a support for all students, employees, and the community. Uh, each board member represents an employee group, get to negotiations, you get to know the employee groups more intimately, or, like in the case of ESS, we have Jamie and Kathy working on collaborative group work right now. So the amount of things that go on and incredible, and I think it's often forgotten by our public school board official, is somebody who is a true leader, stands up for what they believe, and also knows how to compromise in order to make investments of a great school district. Uh, I think that, uh, right now, our slogan of every kid every day is one that, uh, I think we are all proud of, and I think you guys all emulate that in passions that I see from each of you. I love your passion, um, and I think your service is respected and appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Moving on to item D, bus driver recognition. February 22nd was, um, the day to recognize and appreciate all of our bus drivers across the state, and Mr. Olson is going to talk about that.
And I, I will tell you, I'm going to steal something from Kathy. Um, I'm going to read two paragraphs from her first, but, um, it's awesome, um, working for a board chair that recognizes the, all the different things that we have going on in the Act that we're all trying to do inside a school system. Uh, she wrote recently to our transportation company, uh, these two paragraphs. "As we emerge from the challenges of the pandemic, we are aware more, uh, now than ever of the tremendous value of our dedicated drivers. Competent, qualified school bus drivers are in critically short supply all over the state and nation, but here in Monticello, we are incredibly fortunate to have so many experienced and long-serving drivers and from our community. We have been so much more fortunate than many districts because we have steady, cohesive team of dependable, experienced drivers who are ready and proud to get back in the bright yellow after that pandemic, um, and to serve our students every day. Many of our drivers know every single student on their bus routes by name, and that is absolutely amazing. We know that our local Hoagland Transportation Company is so much more than bus service for students. It's a family-owned and operated business. Uh, Hoagland Transportation has members who have personally attended and graduated from our schools, and now have children or grandchildren enrolled. Their commitment and dedication to our community in the school district spans decades. We extend our deep and appreciation of gratitude to all Hoagland drivers, mechanics, dispatchers, dispatchers, staff, and administrators. We thank you." And that's from the school board. Then I'd like to say, not a lot of people know, but, um, on days like today, I begin talking with Joe, whether it's him calling me, I know Becca probably knows this, or it's me calling him at four in the morning. And, um, we, um, by the, by the time nine o'clock hits, like on a day like today, um, I have 85 either phone calls or text messages from different people that I am involved with in making the decision, and Joe is always my first and my last at nine o'clock in, in the morning, once we know all elementary students have gotten, um, safe. And so there's a lot of things that we are learning today about our district, um, and, uh, learning about our, uh, teachers, our programs, our school board members, and what they do in our bus company. And I really do think today is a day to look at what we do on the course of any given day across this district and to celebrate that. I thank you, Hoagland, for, thank you, Joel, for being there. Uh, for me, uh, from the bottom of my heart, what you give me and help me as, as you're driving the roads with me separately, so we cover different parts of the community, helps tremendously. And I would say on record that, um, uh, if I could make one decision this year, I probably would have made one decision differently. And I would say that you were trying to steer me towards that decision, so, uh, I, I'm not, I'm not afraid to. I'm not afraid to.
You're supporting you 100%.
I know, I know, but, but you do support me 100%, and I thank you for your service.
I can appreciate that. Um, I'm here, certainly feel much more like we're on the same team, and we're talking to the same board. If that bus company over there, and the teacher's over there, and the admin over there, and the group over there, it's really, like, we're part of what happens to everybody, right? Every time I place such a thing, it's like you do, and you stop by, and you stop, right? It's just celebrities that I play with.
Oh, my God.
Have we praised you? It's just, it's just funny, because if any of the school board people want to stop by for, uh, Wednesday, because we're, the school bus driver appreciation day is Wednesday.
And we were on a day off, yeah.
Nine, I think, is when they're coming, this, um, this, right? Welcome to, just hang out and just see it. See that the state patrol, there's going to be here Tuesday through Friday this week, um, inspecting all the school buses. Um, believe it or not, pick the date during the school year, normally during the summer, and clean them all up, you get them to go to, to, to all go. We're all driving, so I don't know if they're going to expect from six to nine to five, but they're going to have a lot.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kunkel. I hope you, you and your staff know much. We do appreciate the work that you do, the tender, loving care you give all of our little ones. Moving on to item number 10, we're almost down to the end of the agenda, folks. Um, we have Tina Burkholder, our Director of Business Services, going to give us a financial forecast scenario, or two.
Uh, well, maybe because I approved the checks, or maybe because I got 96 cupcakes coming Wednesday morning. I don't know. One of those might be it. All right, let's see. It's thinking, so just wanted to run through a couple scenarios that showing up here for me. Cindy's. Hmm. All right, um, there we go. I just want to run through a couple scenarios. Um, we only, I only had one or two last time, so just kind of want to do a couple more with you, and then we'll do some at the budget committee meeting tonight, and then maybe some at the policy meeting next Monday before our meeting. So with the forecast scenarios I'm presenting, I have a lot of common assumptions happening in all of them. So the 23 legislative session's still in the works. Um, our state special ed funding is the same with our co-op in our three districts. Our compensatory funds are higher with more, um, people being eligible with the direct certified Medicaid, um, status. We have our CAREs or SIR money coming to an end, and our other, we have other grants, our GROWYON, MTSS, and rigorous coursework all in the mix as well. On the expense side, we have staffing. Generally, try to assume, next slide, um, three retirements each year in our general fund, and that will have some staffing changes based on enrollment projections. Um, and we're going to look at developing leadership teams at each of our building. Next, on the expense side, that will have salary and benefit changes based on contracts coming due or parameters set by the board. Okay, next slide there. And, um, other non-salary, non-benefit being anywhere from zero to eight percent, uh, depending on what it is with utilities or supplies and whatnot, that we won't borrow short term, and our total expenditures will end up about half a percent or a percent under budget, depending on how far the year is out. Fund balance goals on the next slide has our fund balance policy reminder that we try to be within eight to 16%. We'll use our committed severance fund balance with our severance obligations, looking at our carryover balances at the end of each year, and using our third-party billing money more towards the 24, 25 school year to kind of help get us through a gap. And then other assumptions on the next slide is that we'll utilize our trust for our non-certified employee retire, retiree insurance cost. So the last slide has three different scenarios. And again, the purplish-blue on the bottom is what SOD is, statutory operating debt, where you're at a negative two and a half percent of your fund balance, where the state comes in and takes over. The maroonish bar chart is our fund balance goal of eight percent. The blue chart first is if the governor gave us his, if the legislator approved the governor's proposal of four percent and two percent in the second year, and then, um, addressing cuts in 24, 25 school year, so in year two, of one and a half million, and then two million in 25, 26, because last time I showed you a big, um, cliff that was coming. And it's not something we can do in one year. We're going to have to chew it off into two years. The tanish bar chart is, again, using the governor's proposal of four and two percent, um, looking at a half a million reduction in 24, 25, and 1.5 million in, in 25, 26. And the difference between these two, we have a lot of staffing that we're adding in 23, 24 because of student needs, whether it's EL, special ed, literacy, um, adding one for class sizes, um, helping a lot of, address student needs, um, PARAs, BI's, behavioral interventionists. And the tan doesn't have the whole laundry list. It might, only has a couple. Um, and then the green one has, um, being a little more conservative, getting us at three percent in the first year and two percent in our revenue in year two. And again, I think some of the minimal staffing. This legislative session is a hard one to gauge. It's one like no other, even though they're all on the same page, they're all DFL. It's hard for them, I think, to kind of get things through fast enough, and a lot of things are, are going through the legislative session. There's a lot of labor mandates that are coming through the pike, whether it's, um, changing the minimum starting wage for groups, offering health insurance to, um, different employee groups and what that minimum is, looking at Paid Family Leave Act, adding a tax for that. Some of them has money coming in with it, some of it doesn't, and all that's going to play a role in this. And somehow we need to start approving budget assumptions. Um, so at our March 6th workshop, after we've had our budget committee and more talk at our policy committee, what are some assumptions we can agree on, um, to move the budget planning forward? Because if we want to add those positions, we need to get out there now and, um, start posting and, and getting what we can, because there's, there is a competition to get people hired. So just need your brains to keep thinking about what you're okay with, um, moving the budget forward, and what assumptions we're willing to take on and this budget, because it's not something I can do over Memorial Weekend. I don't want to. I don't think my family deserves that. So how, we have to start now, and what that planning looks like and what we're okay with. So, again, just food for thought. We'll go over it in a budget committee meeting, and then with policy. So what, again, are the assumptions that you're willing to utilize? Because as things change, if there is something that passes all parties, um, you know, we'll tweak those as we go and give updates. Um, but for now, kind of what is that big roadmap?
Any questions for Tina? I've heard from numerous sources that it's, it's a cyclone at the legislature this year. Things are moving faster. Lobbyist Friend says that not in 30 years have they seen things moving this fast.
Yep.
Interesting experience.
All right. Thank you for your work, Tina.
Yes.
Um, first reading of policies. Eric.
First policy is 506, and we had pulled this back in December just to make sure that a couple of clarifications answered, and we brought that back to policy committee and, um, what was, uh, changes, and, um, some of it was assertion of reasonable force. Talk about those. So right now, I know the policy committee has had this and for first reading tonight. Any other questions that you can give me here tonight? Dr. Wilson, myself, I can circle back to prior to going to second reading.
Okay, thank you.
Also at 509, this is adding a new section to us, and I got to say a thank you to Nicole Coto, principal at Little Mountain. We're opening our eyes, and I know that to ask some questions of her when we, but adding a big section that would essentially close open enrollment at a certain date. And we haven't had that before. We've had it open all the time. And what we're seeing is sometimes we have students come in for open enrollment later in a school year and staffed appropriately. And then we're scrambling line staff. And in the case of the staff shortage across the nation, this was a really, really great idea to bring forward. And that's the difference of this policy. We're at, we would add some dates, not maybe starting as aggressive as some other school districts, which some have like April deadlines. But this would be to close the window at June 15. So as a starting spot, and see how that works for our district. And it still gives us time to respond from June to the end of August, rather than sometimes not being able to respond until somebody open enrolls, you know, a day before school. So it's, I think, a good change to bring forward.
The only thing I wanted to ask about that is, does that make sense for the budgeting side to pick that date as, because it was an arbitrary date, right, that we selected? Would it make more sense to select something earlier? Is that too early? Does that work? Do you have an opinion on that?
Everything's already set in motion by 15.
That's my concern. If we allow open enrollment up till then, and everything's set in motion, does that potentially put us in a tough spot when, if we get a big wave, you know, come, I don't know, people are frustrated in May and June, and they want to make a big switch. They see our deadlines, June 15, and all of a sudden you get a bunch more? That'd be my only question about the.
Great question.
If we're going to be more time then, if say we had 20 kids, 25 kids, we can plan better, look at class sizes and make a recommendation. The list is already kind of, this is the number of staff we have to have in place. We might need two based on the number of kids coming in and where they're being migrated. Then we would get funding for that, too, when they came here. So it should be, should be a balanced outcome.
Makes sense then, June 15?
I think what my understanding is, we're trying to avoid having to shuffle a lot of the elementary classrooms to make the numbers come out right.
That would help us with that product. But I, I mean, I do wrestle with your question mark. I do think it potentially, students that we sometimes add late in the year, statistically seem like they have, in, in, we're paired, we have to increase the burden on, on a system. April would be aligned more with the budget, which I can see that, that comment very well. I guess we could try it one way or the other. Tina's okay, comfortable with June, but we could try, I mean, I'm okay to change it to April. I mean, that was a suggested date as well.
I wonder what the, what the downfall would be of going with April to start with. It doesn't sound like it's out of line with what other districts are doing. If it protects us from the unknown, I would support that.
Having a family move soon.
They're fine.
It's fine.
This is open enrollment.
We got to hurry up. We got a budget meeting yet?
Right. That was a good point, though, Jeff. This would not affect, you know, a family moving within the boundaries of our district is still entitled to enroll their children, even if it's the last day of school. So.
Well, this is first reading, and I can bring that back to policy. We'll have another discussion between the April 15 and June 15 deadline. I think it's a, we'll have time to do that.
Call some of your colleagues and see if they have on their.
We've seen, we've seen it early, for sure. And we've seen no date, and seen dates in the summer. So there's a little variety.
Yeah, next Monday's our policy meeting anyways.
Yeah.
All right. Item 11, you've all been waiting for it.
So move.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Jeff Hagley, seconded by Casey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. We are adjourned at 8:40. Thank you, everyone.